Reconvene the council meeting, thank you. I'm glad to see that we have such a social group here and everybody is talking and staff is talking with the residents.
Because it's all the usual suspects.
It's awesome.
It's all the usual suspects.[15.17][15.17](laughing).
Okay, so, we're going to move to the next item on the discussion, unfinished business. The Ponte Gorda, its journey to the future, an update by Melissa Reckert and Nancy Johnson. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Melissa Reckert, Communications Manager for the City of Ponte Gorda. And with me I have my wonderful-
Try to speak into the microphone.
I have my wonderful, do we have it on? Yeah?
Yep.
I have my wonderful co-host for this event, Ms. Nancy Johnson, CEO of the Team Ponte Gorda, and just a delight to work with. So she's going to kick it off for us and we'll tell you all about the conference. And if you have any questions at the end, we'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Melissa. Yeah, we've been having a good time planning this together. We're a good team. As you know, council approved the City of Ponte Gorda and Team Ponte Gorda entering into a project to do some public education leading up to the charrettes. And you'll be pleased to see on the conference logo, where there was originally only two logos, Team and the City, you may notice that the Charlotte Community Foundation and the Smugglers Enterprise Foundation and the Charlotte County Economic Development Partnership have all become major funders of this event. And we are, have offered them the opportunity to be co-conveners, which means they get a say in things. And their input has been very valuable and they're terrific partners to work with. So, we're really excited to report that. It truly is a community convened event with these partners. So, why did we do this? Just to remind you and remind those presentants, we're thrilled that the city is doing the citywide master plan this year. I think it's a really smart thing to do. I think it's even smarter that you're doing it in three components, not just the vision part. So, first we have the community vision, which will be embodied in the charrettes in early 2019, but you've also added an economic development analysis and a review of the land development regulations. We think that Journey to the Future's contribution will be a major public education effort. What we're hoping is that people will come away with this with lots of information on best practices and new ideas for small cities like ours. We're not the only city to go through the issues that we go through. We've done so much in this town since the first master plan in 2005. What we've done is truly amazing. And now it's time to continue to engage the public in visioning for the next stage of our future. And in order to do that, we're hoping that people will come away with this, from this experience with new ideas about best practices and say, you know, may well look what they did in Delray Beach, we could do that here. And so, we've put together a really good program. The current status enrollment right now is, we have 558 registrants plus about 60 guests. So that's about 610. We have room, given our setup in the event center, for about 100 more participants. So it's still open for registration. Registration is on the Team website, and I think can also be accessed on the city website. If you just click on teampontegorda.org, it's right there. Melissa's going to tell you a little bit about the program itself and who we have speaking.
Okay, thanks Nancy. I'll just switch spots with you here. So our program, what we did was, we put together a program committee. So it wasn't just Nancy and I that thought, oh, we're going to select the speakers and really influence that process. What we did is, we put together a cross-section in the community and the organizations in the community to make up that panel that chose our speakers. So out of that panel, they came up with some great ideas, and I'll share those with you. We ended up with Rick Severance, CEO of Babcock Ranch, former CEO of Seaside, Florida, and one of the first communities in America designed on the principles of new urbanism. So he's going to talk a lot about that. We'll have Victor Dover, who of course, we know is from Dover Coal, the firm selected to assist with our master plan. He'll be talking about developing award-winning towns. Tim Hernandez will be there talking about new urban communities. He's a builder and developer, really skilled in infill redevelopment and traditional neighborhood development opportunities, and he's worked a lot in South Florida. So that's really important to hear from somebody that's worked in communities like ours. We have a really, really great panel put together. Donna Peterman really took the lead on this one. We know in community development that communities can't move forward without a really strong understanding of their past and their history. And history is so strong here in Ponte Gorda, so we have a panel consisting of Gussie Baker, Martha Barita, Chris Evans, and Paula McQueen, and Lee Pitts will be with us to facilitate that panel. So this again, will be a really, really strong panel. And then, the keynote of the day, John Redman. And that's a name that many of you are probably familiar with. He's the president of Allegiant Travel. He's going to share why Allegiant selected Charlotte Harbor as its site for its first major resort, and the potential benefits he sees for Ponte Gorda and Charlotte County arising from his company's significant investment. So this will be a lunch speaker that everyone gets to hear. If you've already registered for this event, you probably know that you're, we're only allowed to make two selections of the presentations. We, good news, we're going to have these videotaped, so if you do not get to see someone that you're interested in seeing, we'll have those on the city's website, I'm sure on Team Ponte Gorda's website. So everyone will be able to hear the information from each of these speakers. And then Nancy's going to talk a little bit about a special presentation that was put together as part of the program.
Yeah, this is going to be the kickoff in the opening session. It was former Councilwoman Tom Kavanaugh's idea, and if you recall Julie Moriarty, who has presented to this council, I think in particular the Henry Street proposal, that does just beautiful computer graphics. And it's not going to be stationary, there's just a stationary slide I'm showing you, but it's going to be a fly-through of four areas of the city downtown, of what they would look like if they were built out to the current LDRs. In other words, what someone could just pull a permit and build right now without asking for any variances, any special permissions, what would be permitted under our current LDRs. And as we move into a conversation about the citizens' vision and the subsequent changes that might be required of our LDRs, which is part of the master planning process, this will give people a little heads-up about, okay, this is what we could do right now. This particular view is if you were walking down the Harbor Walk behind the Justice Center, and you see a huge blocky professional building on the left there, it would definitely change your experience of walking through the mangroves down the Harbor Walk. And right now, that could be. So, we're doing City Marketplace, the area near the Justice Center, the area on the YouSave lot, and part of Solomon Street. And it's really a creative presentation. It's just a what-if, that's all it is, to stimulate people's thinking.
And then, of course, we save the best for last. We wrap up with our city manager, Howard Kunic. He'll be talking about-
The pressure is on.
Let's hope so. Actually, we know that the community is really, really wondering what's next in regards to the citywide master plan. What's that charrette process going to look like? When's it going to be? How are they going to be able to participate? Howard's going to have all that information for us at that event. And we're really hoping that this event will stimulate some new thinking in the community, introduce new ideas to the master planning process, and bring people together. We know that the spirit of Ponte Gorda is strong, and it's based on the principle that we're better if we work together and we keep these conversations going.
So, we are really psyched about this whole thing. As I said, we have new partners. We also have a dozen additional funding partners that have, who have bought ads in the program booklet. The program booklet is going to be a really, really nice piece that, you know, can carry us into the charrettes and beyond. There'll be a Harbor Nissan car out in front in recognition of their sponsorship. And we're just, we think the whole thing is coming together beautifully, and we just think it's going to be a day that you're going to be proud of.
Excellent. Thank you for shining the light on Ponte Gorda. Jean Palowski gave me this and said, here you go. This is (laughing). So, yes, I've-
Any questions?
Well, it's not really a question, it's a comment, and that is, I've had residents say to me, I'm really looking forward to this day because, so that I can go provide input. And I said, well, this is really a day for us to absorb and listen and learn, so that we can prepare ourselves for what's to come, in helping them, you know, to clarify. So it's, I think it's important.
I think that's an important point that we want to make clear to everyone, is that the city is planning a major input process, but this is not it. There won't be a lot of opportunity, there'll be a few questions and answers at the end of each session.
Right.
But it is not the kind of session where people are going to be asked to give their vision. This is preparation for that. That will come, but this is the prep for that, where we're trying to feed people information about best practices. That's a really important point.
Yes. Questions for Nancy and Melissa?
No, one thing I want to let you know, that Melissa's going to be on Fox 4 on Sunday at 8:30 a.m.
Are you? At Fox 4 at 8:30?
Yes, with Lee Pitts.
With, oh, with Lee Pitts, live?
Yes.
Oh, got to put that on the agenda. That's going to need to go out in the city's weekly report. Yeah, we need to let people know.
And one more quick reminder, if you are attending the event, bring your tickets or bring your cellphone so that you can check in, and then also so that we can move through the line quickly. If you don't need to bring a bag or a purse with you, don't, because there will be bag checks, and the quicker that we can get these 600, 700 people in through the door, the better the day is going to be. So, just a couple reminders there.
Thank you, that's great. Well, thank you, Nancy. I know when you first mentioned to me earlier this year that you felt like something needed to happen, and you've taken this vision and run with it, and really, it's grown in such a wonderful way. So thank you for your leadership in providing that to our, to our community and helping expand that vision, so.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome. New business transportation build-out study.
Good morning. For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. Over the past year, we've been working on a transportation and build-out study. Without further ado, I'd like to pass it over to our consultant, Mr. William Roll of Kimberly-Horn Associates.
I cannot hear him.
Good morning. I'm William Roll with Kimberly-Horn and Associates. I'm based in Lakeland. I am a member of the AICP and also an accredited professional with the Congress for New Urbanism. I've been doing transportation planning here in Charlotte County for the bulk of my career for over 20 years. So I'm very familiar, not just with Ponte Gorda, but also with Charlotte County overall. And so today, I'd like to give you the presentation, give you an overview of the recommendations. And so you are being asked today to approve the findings that are contained within this presentation, but I'm going to try, in the interest of time, not get into the nitty-gritty, you know, details of every single recommendation. And so, we will go over some highlights in terms of the study and how it was done. In terms of objectives, I think it is important to highlight this, is to identify long-term transportation needs. So this is not how the sidewalk will get around that particular tree, but rather, what are the big picture items that the city needs to pay attention to, particularly going into the master plan, the upcoming long-range transportation MPO will be doing. It also includes context classification, I'll go into that in a minute, and then provide strategic guidance and help guide future items that the city will do. So, getting started, we did a series of stakeholder interviews. We've interviewed four of the members of the city council, and focused on the following areas, future considerations, growth, and transportation needs.
And can I interject? It's not because you were trying to not interview Councilmember Carrie, it was because when you'd conducted-
She was on the board.
She was not on the council at the time, so.
It's okay, my feelings weren't hurt.[820.31][820.31](laughing).
But I'll sit down anytime you want.
I just thought it was important, because when you said four of the five, it's like, well, what's wrong with, you know, why didn't you interview all five? You know, so, thanks.
So, appreciate that. So in terms of future considerations, and I think this is important, because a long-term transportation strategy, if you will, is a lot like going on the family's biggest vacation ever, okay? You've got to start planning for it way in advance, and you have to get everybody who's an interested party involved. Elsewise, you go on a trip that nobody wants to take. You go to Abilene, if you will. So in terms of big future considerations that we're taking in consideration, is the importance of maintaining the existing character of the community, but while at the same time facing economic realities, a desire for a year-round economy, a little bit more diversity in terms of, you know, population, because you need younger, younger workers, the need to expand the commercial base, much of which was impacted by the hurricane back in 2004. And then, everybody's kind of sensitive to this concept of autonomous vehicles and what's called the shared economy. So the Ubers, the Lifts, the ride shares, which really, five years ago, weren't even, weren't even a consideration, and look at how dramatically different that's been, and dramatic transportation change is going to continue on into the future. In terms of growth considerations, largely, most of the population growth to the south and the east, looking at a target of around 25,000 persons, continued concerns in terms of what the economy is, some highlights in terms of niche industries or items, including, you know, what Western Michigan University's doing, what's going on at the airport, and then also the Sun Secret Resort, which is outside of the city, but that's, you know, we have to be mindful of the potential impacts of that. And so, in terms of transportation considerations, again, Sun Secret Report, concerns about the one-way pairs, discussion about a potential new bridge at some point in time, the intersections on 41 with Red Espinade, and then just generally upgrading existing roadways, providing a good multimodal level of connectivity, bike-friendly. And then, I will comment specifically in terms of public transportation, there really wasn't consensus. There is identification that there's a need, there's maybe some unmet mobility challenges, but that maybe normal traditional fixed route public transportation is not a good fit for the community, which is consistent with what, you know, the discussion or the dialogue's been for the last two decades. And then, safety was also an emphasis. So, one of the first steps we have to do, if we're going to be considering what the future's going to be in terms of transportation, we have that, have an understanding of demographic variables in terms of population and employment. Have a technical process that's applied to develop that type of forecast. Our study area isn't just the city limits, it's the area that's basically, you know, that's bright here in the map. We're going further than the city limits, in recognition that what happens on the edge of the city has a direct influence of the success on the city, and there's likely to be annexation potentially in the future of some of these areas. So, in terms of our study area, we're looking at a bit of a larger area, and you can see in terms of the, you know, the dwelling unit forecast, actually a little bit more in what people were saying. They were saying about 25,000 people, you know, we're saying about 23,000 dwellings, but that's out, that includes outside of the city. That includes the area outside of the city within this planning area as well. So, that was the forecast, fairly significant amount of employment growth, about 12,000 employees, and again, a lot of that out towards the airport, Jones Loop Road area, which is illustrated here in these maps in terms of high locations of dwelling unit growth, and then likewise, employment growth within the community. So now I want to shift and talk about how we plan for roads, and what roads need to look like. And historically speaking, the old way, as I like to call it, we took a look at what a roadway's functional classification was, okay? And so arterials, roads like 17, for instance, have a certain characteristic or need, if you will, in terms of accommodating that type of travel. And then you have your collector roadways, a roadway like, let's say, Akia Stah, and then you have your local streets. And what we see from a planning and engineering standpoint, the level of mobility, in other words, the speed that you could go, is really, really high on those arterial roadways. And then, as you get down to the local street, the access is really great, and the speed isn't that high. Now, that all kind of makes sense. The problem is, is when a roadway like US 41 goes through your downtown, or a roadway like 17, when it goes through your downtown. Now, I drove all the way from Barto on 17, all the way. There's a lot of similarities here in your downtown to what 17 looks like for the entire stretch. Wide lanes, high speed, and so, there's a recognition in the profession that we need to think about other things when we're designing roads. We have to think about the context, what type of area is this roadway going through? And to be honest with you, the Florida Department of Transportation is really taking a lead on this, which is really fairly remarkable. And so, one of the things that they've done is, they are doing context classification. Their design standards for roadways today are different than they were three years ago. It is sensitive to the context of the area. So if it's in a downtown core area, then sidewalks should be wide. The department has that in their design standards. And the speeds, they should be lower. Whereas before, a lot of that design guidance were, was totally based on, what type of road is it, and do I have curb and gutter, or do I have open drainage? And that's what dictated the design of a lot of roads. So one of the things you're going to see in the future is, as roads resurfaced and reconstructed, they're going to look different than they do now, because there's a recognition that the design that was implemented wasn't necessarily appropriate, yes.
Question, does that include the potential for conversion of one-way to two-way streets? Is that something that-
That is an engineering consideration and a planning consideration, and to do that, you would need to do some type of, you would need to do a study just specifically of the operations of those facilities. There's a number of different strategies, though, that can be employed, dealing with the things that aren't good with one-way streets versus the things that are good with one-way streets. And so I will make some comments in terms of the one-way pairs later on in the presentation.
Okay, okay. Because I know it's something that's been suggested by urban planners in the past in regard to our downtown, but FDOT was more focused on throughput, and so they were, that was not a consideration.
Right.
And I just didn't know where that could go in the future, because it does, it does critically impact the personality of what we can, of our downtown, and what we, some of the parameters we are constrained by.
Right, okay. So, consistent with the context classification, the Florida Department of Transportation does have a complete streets policy, and that's guiding all aspects of the planning, design, construction, maintenance, and operations of their facilities. And that's not just lip service, they're really, they're really doing it. So this is an example of context classifications, and really, you have a fairly diverse palette. You have everything from what we call rural, within this, within this planning area, all the way up to the most intense, which is the urban center, and that will be right within your downtown core. And this is a conversation that's already happened with the Department of Transportation, at least on the state roads, in terms of what we're identifying in terms of context classification. And they gave us guidance, and this is not going to be a surprise to DOT. I'm going to skip over functional classifications. So here's the context classifications, you can see how things are basically spread out. And so basically, you have the urban center core, and then immediately around that, you have the urban general, and then you have the recognition in terms of the areas that are more suburban and development. A big differential between urban versus suburban is, if the streets look like a gridded roadway network and have a lot of connectivity, we tend to consider that to be urban. If they're a bunch of cul-de-sacs and not very many streets going through, that's indicative of suburban. So there was a number of roadway improvements that we assumed. Some of these are under construction currently. We'll highlight one of the projects that was assumed in terms of our future forecast activities, was a four-laning of a portion of Taylor Road. That's in your long-range transportation plan, there's currently no money applied to that. But looking out to a 2045 horizon timeframe, that is an assumed improvement, because it is identified in the current plan. And so in terms of looking at, you know, forecasts of traffic conditions, our biggest areas of concern is US 41, the bridges, basically, and coming right into downtown, 41 south of Akia Stah Drive, Val Harbor Boulevard, and West Marion Ave. Those, from a traffic, just your traffic volume forecast in the future, those are the areas that we're concerned. We took a look at crashes, and specifically focused our attention on crashes of fatalities and severe injuries, because those always get reported, and we would surely trade off minor fender bender crashes for more severe crashes, if that were possible. And you can see, really, you know, the worst concentration is on US 41, immediately south of downtown, within the downtown area. That's where we have the highest occurrence. And then, in terms of bicycle and pedestrian, severe injuries, fortunately no fatalities, it's a little bit more of a random pattern. To be honest with you, that's very common to see in a community of your nature, given the demographics, the age, the economic profile within the, within the community. This is not a surprising number, and indeed, it's a fairly low number. So, as part of the master planning effort, we took a look at the existing work that's already been done in terms of bicycle and pedestrian facilities, that's incorporated in here, but we also identified additional locations or facilities based on the context classification, the nature of the roadway, and the type of connectivity. And so there's additional, other proposed sidewalks or path or trails that are identified in the report. And I'll comment, a lot of these are outside of the city limits, because there's not necessarily that attention to detail outside of the city limits historically, as there is within the city. But as the city continues to grow, and folks, be it the county, DOT, or the city, needs to be mindful of accommodating that future, future connectivity. Likewise, on bicycle facilities improvements. So with that, I'd like to get into talking about recommended key action items, and this ties back to the overall general study, but also those locations, those corridors of concern. And so, I think one of the most successful things that this project can do is successfully hand off information and projects off to the long-range transportation plan that the MPO is going to do, because that is a major funding opportunity for major projects. And so to that end, the major ask would be studies, basically PD&E, preliminary engineering, or equivalent studies to be done for the Burnt Store Road at US 41 intersection, a potential extension of Burnt Store Road to go to the north, and then US 41 at Notre Dame, and Tucker's great. And I'll go into a little bit more detail in this, in some of the following slides. And so downtown, one-way pairs was an area of concern, and the big issues are pedestrian crossings, access across Reda Espinade, which is terribly problematic, and then the control of excessive speeds on the one-way pairs. One-way pairs in and of themselves don't necessarily have to be bad, but if the purpose of those one-way pairs is to move a lot of traffic really fast and do it through a downtown, that's very bad. And that's what you have. And I'll be honest with you, this morning, just because I wanted to be able to shoot straight from the heart, driving into your city this morning, I decided I was going to maintain a consistent distance from the vehicle that was in front of me. Until I got to the US 41 intersection, I was anywhere from 10 to 15 miles an hour over the posted speed limit, all the way from Interstate 75. And it wasn't like this driver in front of me was driving aggressively, we were all doing it. And let's face it, I bet most of you all and folks in the audience, if you had to go over to 75 and come back today, you're probably going to do the same thing. And it's because of the way the roadway is designed and some of the design aspects of it. So there's things that can be done to control speeds on one-way pairs. There is conversations that are taking place between the city and the Florida Department of Transportation. I was just recently part of one of those up in Barto with Mitchell, and we met in their design studio. We were talking about US 41 and items of really critical concern, particularly there's intersections that have a lack of crosswalks on it, and I just, I, just basic urban design, you can't have downtown streets and not have a crosswalk on or off four legs of the intersection. It doesn't matter what the volumes or what the auto demands are, you've got to have crosswalks at these locations. And so that conversation's taking place with the department, and they're even giving some consideration, I think very strong consideration, moving forward to studying, putting even signal control up at Reda Espinade, as part of being able to provide access there on the northern side of the downtown core. So there's part of the study, and the continuation and ongoing work, that's the type of conversation that's happening for potential improvements in the near term. That's exactly the kind of conversation that needs to happen in terms of overall recommendation on an ongoing basis. So in downtown, again, it's excessive speeds on the one-way pairs, multimodal considerations, access and pedestrian crossings, and then evaluating how many lanes you need, particularly going outbound on 17 in downtown. I really honestly question why there's three lanes. I think there's three lanes there, because there's three lanes going the other way. But realistically, here in downtown, there's never any time that more than two lanes of traffic's being fed into this. And so sometime in the next couple of weeks, just go out there and look at it, watch it, and you'll, you'll realize there's just really not a need for three lanes there. And there's other things that could be done that helps improve the fabric of the downtown and helps contribute to success. Downtown west, over by Fisherman's Village, needed engineering study in terms of pedestrian crossings. Again, I just, I'm shocked by how fast the traffic is out there. And then, more importantly, is taking another look in terms of what we call positive guidance, in terms of the wrong-way drivers. Given the demographics of the visitors to Fisherman Village and the surrounding area, it is terribly common for people to go the wrong way. I see it every single time I visit that area. So we need to do a better, we need to do a better job, from a design standpoint. Next location is US 41 at Burnt Store Road, and again, this would be an engineering study on the part of Florida Department of Transportation. And one of the things that this fits into is this potential of taking Burnt Store Road and extending it further, extending it north all the way up to 17. and extending it further, extending it north all the way up to 17. Right now, there's an opportunity to be able to construct a corridor of that nature. The benefit is, it gets a lot of that regional traffic off of 41, gets it out of downtown. So that is, without a doubt, a substantial benefit to the community and to downtown in providing reliable travel and safe travel, both to residents and visitors of the city, but also a lot of those regional trips that pass through. I will comment, it could create also a potential in the future that when the bridges on 41 are reconstructed, it could provide an alternative touchdown point. That's a lot of study work that would have to be done, but it's something that's been in the long-range transportation plan for over 10 years now. And really, the first step is, was what can be done in terms of advancing Burnt Store Road forward. Elsewise, the pressure becomes, well, do we need a six-lane 41 south of downtown to handle this, handle this demand? We can handle this demand more appropriately with an appropriately designed and appropriately located roadway facility. I think we'd all agree that that would be a much better improvement. Next location is 41 at Notre Dame Boulevard and Tucker's Grade. So Tucker's Grade and Notre Dame Boulevard are kind of the, some of the major east-west collector roadways down in that area. And you can see, they don't meet up with each other. So what that means right now, eh, not so bad. But as this area grows and develops, boy, that stretch of 41 is going to become treacherous because you have a lot of turning movements, they're gonna be coming off of Tucker's Grade, going up, and then having to make the left turn. It's gonna present safety issues, and it's gonna present capacity issues. So today is the time, the ask in the next long-range plan, hey, let's take a look at this, and does something else need to be done other than just widening 41? That's not really gonna provide the mobility or the safety that's needed. Akiastah Drive, I think there's a recognition by most parties involved that the roadway that was constructed, the improvements that were constructed years ago were not the right improvements.
Correct.
And so primarily, it doesn't need to be a four-lane roadway, but what is needed is the left-turn lanes and intersection improvements, particularly over at Val Harbor, in addressing, you know, multimodal issues in terms of people just being able to safely be able to cross, cross the roadway. So in terms of the next step is, well, to address those action items, to take the next actionable step on those, which in talking with city staff, I think you're in really good shape in terms of doing that. Continue to set priorities in terms of roadway improvements and multimodal improvements. I mean, it is a blast to see somebody presenting on your capital improvements plan and the implementation that's happening, because there's not very many communities, especially communities your size, that are implementing the scope or range of improvements that you are in your community. Continued coordination with DOT, the county, and the MPO, because they're your partners, and oftentimes they're partners with money, which is very good partners to have. And then to use this information to inform the citywide master plan, this effort that you're about to get underway, that's very exciting. And so with that, I'm available to answer questions that you might have.
Questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Lynn?
I sit on the MPO board.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so one of the things that is on the long-range plan is that Jones Loop Road will be widened to six lanes. Piper Road Extension is soon to open. The, it will be final by the middle of March, but they expect to open the road sometime in January. So I question why you think Burnt Store Road needs to be extended, because easily, you could take the Jones Loop out to Piper and go straight up to 17, and you're actually past the freeway at that point.
Right. Because you're gonna have continued growth within that area between the interstate and over towards 41, so that area is gonna continue to grow. A number of the developments that are in that area tend to be more multifamily in terms of housing. So one, there's a need within that area, okay? The bigger need is being able to provide another opportunity for the 17 trips that right now are inclined to go all the way over to 41 and then go to the south, to be able to pull them further out of the core, further outside your major commercial corridor. So that's the second reason. The third reason is it does provide a future, long-term opportunity for a different connection of 41 in the future. Bridges have their useful life, there'll be a point in time in which the existing bridges will have to be replaced. I mean, I can tell you, you know, historically, from a Florida Department of Transportation standpoint, they would really like six-lane those bridges, okay? They'd like to widen those bridges, and they'd like to widen 41 to the south of downtown. What we're looking to do is provide an opportunity, consistent with prior planning efforts, to provide an alternative at such time that those decisions are being made. So again, in terms of a master plan from a transportation standpoint, you know, articulating other opportunities are important. So you asked the question about one-way pairs earlier. I will say, from a, from a amount of transportation demand today and anticipated in the future, it might be really, really challenging to undo the one-way pairs at this point in time. Take a quantity of that regional traffic today, and the growth in that regional traffic, and relocate it to another corridor, it provides you options. It provides you an opportunity to be able to do that. So that's, it's a, it's a long-term solution to an immediate problem, but that's where, from an implementation standpoint, there's things that need to be done to control speeds, but there needs to be a long-term vision for how to deal with regional traffic that doesn't potentially involve going through your downtown. Because otherwise, it's always, it's always gonna be a constraint, whether it's on multi-lane, two-way, the two-way traffic roadways or one-way roadways, having a large amount of regional traffic passing through is a consideration. From a statewide perspective, you know, we're looking at the population in Florida to increase by 40% by the year 2045. A lot of that growth is gonna happen from I-4, southeast Florida. So even if Punta Gorda didn't grow a bit, not one bit, what's happening in terms of Sarasota County, the rest of Charlotte County, and Lee County to the south, that's gonna create substantial transportation impacts, also given consideration to the fact that realistically, over the river, there's, there's, there's two options. There's 75 and 41. So it's really important to be looking now in terms of opportunities to provide other access. Because imagine 40% more traffic on 41. I mean, that's scary.
Well, doesn't, the MPO already has, in their long-range, is it the 2035 or 2040?
2040 Plan currently.
Plan, has for new bridge, new bridges across the Peace River to offload 41?
It was, it's identified as an opportunity and unfunded need.
There's a lot of those.
Yes.
Identified needs that are unfunded are very common.
Yes.
I just, just curious as how this interplays or interacts with the Southwest Florida Planning Commission's transportation studies that go from Marco Island to Sarasota?
You know, I think really the relevant thing to look at in terms of transportation planning is the MPO process, because it is the thing that culminates all the other pieces in together. It's where the population employment is, and it's also where the identification of what this county's strategies are. Now, the model that is used to do that evaluation is a model that includes all of FDOT District 1, so includes everything from a coastal standpoint.
Okay.
From Manatee County, all the way down to Collier County, then all of the interior counties like Hardy and the Soto County. So the tool that we are using is comprehensive in nature in terms of evaluating, you know, those travel demands and travel flows.
Good. I just wanted to be clear.
That's a good point that you make, that of how the MPO is working. I know that Lynn, the MPO, you meet with Lee County?
Yes.
And I think with Sarasota County, the Sarasota-Manatee MPO as well, so.
Sarasota-Manatee joint meeting will be in January, the Lee County will be in February.
Okay. So a lot of joint work. Other questions?
Comments? Thank you for the compliment, that you feel our city is doing a lot of really great work. So appreciate that, and thank you for the insight on all of this as we move forward. A lot to think about, because I think, and I've had residents concerned when they see there's a paving project on 41, they've already expressed their concern, does that mean that they're gonna six-lane it? And residents don't want to see six-laning 41. And I would agree with you, all we're doing is encouraging higher speeds. And, yeah, anyway.
I can say, as a city council member, that I have been pulled over for exceeding the speed, as it's been noted in the public record before.
I'm shocked.
Very easy to do.
Congratulatory remark?
Yes. Our Punta Gorda Police Department showed no mercy, and I appreciate it.
And Chief Davis is over there laughing in the other room.
And thank you for being honest.
Your action item today is to approve the findings and recommendations presenting. So that is what city staff is asking in terms of the-
Okay.
I so moved it, will you approve?
I'll move. There's been a motion and a second to approve the transportation build-out study. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, you all have a great holiday.
You too. Happy New Year. Okay, we move to recommendation from city officers. City manager. You're the first up. Am I right?
Yeah, I don't, it's evaluation.
It's evaluation time.
I have a, the only request I have is, what I've told you, that to, no consideration whatsoever for any salary increase, but I just want to be treated as the other employees regarding the ability to enter into a 401. We don't call it a 401K, we call it a 401A. It's the same thing. That's all. Just to be treated as the other employees.
Okay. Comments?
I mean, I can make a motion to approve that.
You want to have any dis-
I have a question.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, and just so that we're clear. Howard is a contract employee, are we allowed to do that?
I don't have an answer to that.
I want to make sure, I want to do it, I want to make sure we can.
Do we have anybody from HR in the crying room?
HR is the one that put it together.
Okay.
Then that answers my question.
As long as that's the case, then we're fine.
I guess, I'm looking at, at budget implications of, of potential, if we were to, because Howard is a consultant, of potentially up to a 3% increase in the contract amount as opposed to providing matches of up to 5% or more. So I just, you know, it is a budget item.
I asked for clarification on that from the finance director, and all I got was the, you know, what's allowed. It didn't, I would, I'd like to know what the financial implications are.
The direct financial implication is that if I put in 10% of my pay into the 401K, the city matches 7.5%. If I put in 5%, the city matches 5%.
Right. But my question is, does that give you a larger-than 3% amount of money going in, and then are we?
Yes.
Yeah, if he puts in 10%, it would be 7.5%.
And we have that in our budget.
Which would be 4.5% over 3%.
I was talking actual dollars.
And I think that your question of can we-
I thought we were capped at 3%.
For a contract, I don't know. Lynn, you look like you have-
I'm just doing the math.
I had the same question.
It's more than 3%.
Because the city will match 7.5% to his 10. So, yeah, it is substantially a lot more than a standard 3% increase.
It's a potentially additional 4.5%.
Right.
Because if we don't give him a raise, and he puts in 3%, we match 3%, it's a wash for us. So anything over a 3% contribution for Howard would be an increase over that 3%.
Can we put a cap on it?
You can do whatever you'd like.
What is your desire? I mean, if you put a cap on it, then you would put a cap on, on what? How would you do that? What would you suggest?
Contribution that the city will match.
Right. So do you have a suggestion?
I think, before we go to that point?
Yes.
We need to know quantitatively what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so the question that we need to put before us is, is what is the potential contribution from the compensation package is? Is it $100,000? Is it $150,000, et cetera? So what is that quantitative number? I think that's the point where a council member, Carrie, was trying to get to.
I wasn't, were you getting it at actual dollars, or were you getting it in percentages?
My concern is that I want it to pass the smell test for the rest of the employees. You know, if we're, if we're saying we can only give them a 3% raise in certain categories, and then we're going to give our city manager a 7.5% raise or whatever, I just want it to pass.
I think, here's the thing, though, general employees are able to participate in the 401A plan.
Same way.
In the same manner. So if a general employee got a 1% or a 2% or a 3% pay raise, they, it is, the 401A plan is separate and distinct from a pay raise.
Right, but he's stipulating that this is in lieu of a raise. That's what, that's, that's my, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, and Howard is, as Howard explained to me, was an item that he did not negotiate when he, when we negotiated the contract, did not negotiate the ability to participate in the 401A defined contribution plan. And so he would like to be able to participate in the defined contribution plan. Okay, and so-
But it's gonna have budgetary implications, right?
Well, it does have.
Of course.
A question, the employees, most of the time, get a 3% increase every year, correct?
A merit of up to 3, yes.
Okay. Plus, they can participate.
Plus, they can participate.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. They can do both.
I gotcha. I'm okay then.
So technically, they could get up to 13%.
Right.
Or it wouldn't be that much, because the city matches 7.5% to 10%, but they could technically get 10.5% or whatever it ends up being, so.
Yes.
Which is a-
I understand that.
But they're, yeah, and it goes, 7.5% of that goes into their 401. Because we closed the defined benefit plan.
Okay, well, that's, that's a simple answer then.
I understand.
I just want to do, we're not asking for a lot more. He's not asking for a raise. If he puts his 3% in, and we put in 3% in, the city's liable for 6%. So there's another one, we're talking about a 1 and a, if Howard decides to put in his whole 10%, we've given him a 1.5% raise.
He's not asking, he's just asking for us to-
No, I'm just, I'm just talking about the net dollars. If we don't give him a raise, okay, and he puts in 3%, he gets 3%.
Correct.
Okay?
But if he puts in 10%-
10%, he gets 7.5%. But we didn't give him the 3% upfront that he could put in to match. So there's really only a 1.5% net difference that we're talking about to Howard's possession, if he determines to take-
I don't think so. Okay. Yeah, I don't get your math.
Moving right along.
Moving right along.
I move.
But there's already a motion on the floor. What was your motion, Jahah?
My motion was to approve.
I'll second that.
Lynn's going to. Without any constraint?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I understand.
No constraints.
No constraints.
He can put up to 10% in.
Whatever he wants to do.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second to, to approve-
To allow him to participate in 401.
-allowing Howard to participate in defined contribution plan.
As the rest of the employees.
As the rest of the employees. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. I'm not opposed to that, I'm opposed to the amount. So, I just need to clarify.
Okay, 4 to 1?
4 to 1.
Thank you.
Okay. City attorney? Anything else? Okay.
For the record, I did not want my silence to be considered as an admission of guilt. When I'm traveling within the city of Punta Gorda, I always abide by the speed limit. And the only other thing I have to say is I wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and see you next year.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you. City clerk?
My evaluation, if you'd like to discuss.
What are your, it's Karen's evaluation is the first thing on the agenda, so what would you like to recommend?
I would like to recommend we do a 4% increase for Karen. Karen is at the low end of the spectrum in the salary range, and rather than a standard 3% increase, she was just raised to the very low end of the spectrum on the salary range with the new salary study that was done, and I'd like to at least give her at least one additional percent. That would be my suggestion, and I would make a motion to that effect.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to give Karen a 4% raise that would help her in where she is among, in the city clerk salary range. All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Aye. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Moving on to boards and committees then? Go through them quickly, starting with announcement of vacancies. We have a three-year term as an alternate on the Board of zoning appeals, and unexpired terms an alternate on the building board, and one unexpired term as an alternate on the code enforcement board. Moving to nominations, we have a three-year term for an alternate on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. We do have one eligible applicant, so if you would like to nominate and appoint, I need a motion.
Nominate and appoint?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion to nominate and appoint in a second?
Mr. Wooster is his name.
Excuse me, Mr. Wooster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and Mr. Wooster is nominated, and congratulations.
Thank you. And then lastly, under appointments, we have an unexpired term on the Punta Gorda Housing Authority. I'm not sure I'm giving you the right forms here.
Question.
Okay. And we have three eligible applicants. Your voting forms are being distributed.
Lynn, you have a question?
I just want to clarify, we have an applicant that has a Newport mailing address. They can live in Northport, is that correct?
Correct. I had forwarded you earlier the bylaws change that the housing authority had made to include Northport.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Because that is one of their, they have units in Northport.
Thank you.
Any appointees, Ms. Benjamin?
Congratulations.
I have, other than just saying Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, same to you, Karen.
You again.
Policy and legislation, I don't have any policy and legislation items. The only item I've been asked to mention by some residents is that, who are moving an historic home in Punta Gorda on Friday morning at 9 o'clock, there's a cross, directly across from City Hall, is a yellow house, it's right next door to Sun Coast Title, Sun, not Sun Coast.
Yeah, that was a name of it.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, it's right next door to the Title business, and they're moving it on down the street, down Harvey Street. And so, the move is going to be placed on Monday, or Friday morning at 9 o'clock. The residents said that people have been asking, they want to know about it, they want to come watch. So, they asked if I would mention it now, so I'm, I said I would be glad to do that. Other than that, I just, I hope that everyone has a wonderful holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, safe holiday, and we have a lot going on in 2019, I'm looking forward to a great year.
Thank you.
Council member comments? Debbie?
I have one thing, and that is that Rob Hancek has been appointed by the Airport Authority to be the city of Punta Gorda liaison. So, he and I are going to be meeting to discuss what exactly that is going to mean, but we have been in communication already, and I just thought everybody should know, because, you know, he does live here, so that. And then I would just like to say that the last two weeks, I have just been amazed at the number of things that our fire department and our police department have done for the children and the people of this community. It's so wonderful, and they just don't get enough credit for it. But it really reinforces what, what this city is all about, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, absolutely. That was such a joy to be able to be present.
Yes, it was.
Over at Baker Academy.
And at the Methodist Church, too.
And, yes.
Right.
At the Methodist Church, so it was terrific. And thank you for working with Commissioner Hancek. I know that he was not able to be our liaison because of his particular therapy regimen he was on that prevented him from coming to our meetings, although he wanted to.
Yeah.
So, that's really great, because he, he also represents our city as an airport commissioner, so that's really great.
Yes.
To be able to work through any kind of issues or whatever. Awesome.
Looking forward to working with him.
Great.
I want to wish everybody a joyous and happy holiday and exciting new year, and I specifically would like to take notice that our, our fire chief, Ray Briggs, will soon be leaving on a humanitarian trip to Central America. It'll be his second one to provide medical assistance to people far less fortunate than we are, and I wish him Godspeed and a happy, quick, safe return.
And to his entire family.
Yeah, yeah, they're all going, it's the whole Briggs.
Yeah, the whole Briggs family is going, so yes, Godspeed, and we look forward to their return. Lynn?
Just a couple of quick things. I already mentioned the Carmelita Street intersection improvement with, with the traffic lights that are going to be installed, and also the Piper Road opening. One other thing that was discussed was the Nesbit Road intersection, and it has now been tabled and removed from future agendas, thank heavens. So, we'll hope that it's gone, although I'm, there was a caveat mentioned at the end of the statement, but that, that we should still consider revising it at some point.
Does that mean never say never?
Sort of chopping the corners off of buildings, I don't know how we can, but anyway, it's been officially, it was asked to be removed from future FDOT agendas for the NPO meetings. And lastly, I was appointed last week to the Military Heritage Museum Board of Directors, and I'm very much looking forward to working with them on their relocation, and it's very, very exciting kind of time right now, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. Over abundance of transparency, I don't think there's ever anything that's going to come before the council that would be contradictory, and certainly, it's not a conflict of interest because it's a non-paid type of position, but I just wanted everybody to know that. And I wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, healthy Happy New Year to all.
Thank you.
Residents that are across from the pickleball courts are asking that for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, if play can be suspended so they can enjoy the holidays. I actually received two physicians' notes that actually, that actually show that actually the actual medical harm is caused to them. There's somebody asking for those two days if they can be able to enjoy the holidays like other families in the community.
Which two days?
Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Ah. Why can't we close a public park?
No, no, it's just so, to spend pickleball play, not close the park, but that is, but it's particular because you can hear the play inside their homes, and I think they, they deserve to enjoy the holidays like other people do as well.
Yeah, you're not closing the whole park.
Yeah, I know, but.
We can do it, I mean, it's.
How will we police that?
We will kick them off if they show up and play pickleball. We will get the word out and let them know.
Can we put a, do not piece of yellow tape around it or something?
I mean, assuming you want to do it, we would get the word out and just say, play